Okay, all right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. A quick roll call. Mark here, Rich.
Here.
Colin.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Tony?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, everybody read the February minutes?
Yes.
You have a problem, anything? No?
Nope.
I'll move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, minor subdivision approval. Sir, if you'd like to come on up and let us know what you're doing.
Sir. Good afternoon. I'm Tom Pendleton from McDonald Illeg. I'm the solicitor for the Robert Benjamin Wiley Community Charter School. And the reason why the Charter School and the Holy Family Parish are requesting a subdivision is that currently there is the church, the school, the rectory, and the convent on one parcel. The Charter School is proposing to buy the school, the rectory, and the convent at this time. We will eventually buy the church also, but the diocese is not quite ready to sell the church. So in order to divide the parcel so that the buildings we're purchasing is on its own parcel, we're requesting a subdivision.
Gotcha. So we're subdividing, making just two subdivisions?
There's, yes, from one parcel into two.
Okay, right, right.
With the church on one parcel, the school, the subdivision, and the rectory on the other.
I have an email from Jake regarding this. Now we're looking for the paperwork so I can sign it, but he said, "May I sign the submissions? We need one copy and the others go to the applicant. I believe someone will be there at the meeting to pick them up. The subdivision meets all zoning, lot, and yard requirements." So.
That's easy.
That's, yeah, and he said, "So approval should be given." I don't have a problem with this.
I don't either.
Do you have a problem with this?
I mean, I'd like to see the plot.
Yeah.
I have a copy of the plot here. Right, okay, so this is.
He has a copy of the plot.
Oh, oh, good.
Pass it around.
If that's the same quote you submitted, then.
Thank you.
Oh.
There isn't that plot itself.
Right. Yeah. Talking about this right here.
Yep, yep.
The church from it.
Now we have them.
Correct.
All right.
Voila.
Here we go.
Ask, give, and share receive.
Thank you.
Keep one copy.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
Got it?
Okay, I'll.
No, no.
Get all the closure here. Go see where the church. I'll get it with you. Okay, that's, that's the school, that's the church.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And so it's long line.
That's the rectory.
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, not rocket science.
Yeah. You okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, regarding this minor subdivision approval, do you have any problems?
Nope, I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve, second?
Yep.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I'll get all these signed before you leave.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Okay, Historic Preservation Plan. Josh.
Real quick, so Josh Bloom from Lakota Group was hoping to present the final draft of the Historic Preservation Plan today. It was going to go, if approved today, it would then go to City Council tomorrow. I had prepared the resolution to be on the agenda, and Josh was presenting also, hopefully, by Zoom to council tomorrow. He is going to do that tomorrow, but they did pull the resolution for this council meeting because they want a little bit more time to review the document, which is great. It's a big document, and it's a really good document. So that being said, even if it does get approved today, it will then be for the next, the next council meeting.
Yeah. Kathy, you'd prefer to review it with our approval now anyway, right? So.
Yes.
I mean, we don't have any objections.
And what we reviewed, what we were sent was the final draft?
It was the final draft, correct, yes. And that was all the input, there was community input, the surveys, all of that.
There's not something else that's been.
No, no, that's it. The HRC's signed off on it, the Historic Review Commission, and it's come to you again for approval.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to pass through to the City Council.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll just stay here.
So can we get rid, can we get ahold of this planning and resource person that's gonna talk next?
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not virtual.
You're like 0 for 2 right now.
I swear, it's without fail that's, and no disrespect to you, because I know it's not, it's not an easy process, but I, I feel like it's been difficult with the remote presentations. He, you said you may send him another link?
Send him the other.
Okay. I, I would hope that he could just, he has like a 10-minute presentation to go through the slides. If you're interested, it's, it would be nice to just hear from him. He's, he's prepared it, it's part of the deliverable, so. My, I have just a really quick update. I first and foremost, Heather, if you would mind, this is Heather Olson.
Hi, Heather.
She started last Monday. She's the new Historic Preservation Planner/Planner for the City Vieri. Heather was hired by the City Vieri, and she's, she's joining us at a vibrant and pivotal time, especially for historic preservation. She has training and experience in landscape architecture and planning projects, including downtown corridors, historic homes, and farms, transit, parks, community, schools, and residential projects. Heather also has teaching and writing experience. She looks forward to expanding connections between the city and community groups and furthering the initiatives already in place. So we're very, very excited. Heather, thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
Very excited. Last week was really busy, meeting the HRC members, talking through a lot of, of the historical background of what has happened sort of with the, with the program and getting up to speed. So it was a very productive week last week. I left you a flyer here. We have our first engagement meeting, engagement opportunity for the 12th Street Reimagine Project. That's on Wednesday, March 27th, which is next week at 10:00 a.m. at the Hagerty Family Event Center. We're gonna have different exercises and sort of the kickoff for this project, opportunities to provide input. This is only the first of the engagement piece, this is the first engagement piece to this project. It is an accelerated, it has an accelerated timeline. It's supposed to be complete by the, by June of this year, so it's pretty aggressive timeline. But there'll be a series of other times for input over the course of the next, what, three, three or four months. That will be marketed and publicized probably every other week. So if you can't make it to this one, there'll be another opportunity for you to come out. I know some people have mentioned that the 10:00 a.m. time for people that work is difficult. We're gonna try and have an evening session as well so that you can, we can capture those that work full-time. Just some other quick updates. We are in the process of hopefully signing the Safe Streets and Roads for All contract this week with Kittleson. That, that contract, we, our solicitors worked on for, for a while to tweak some of the language, the legal language in there, and they made some changes, and we should have that signed, and they're ready to go once we have that agreement in place.
Do we have an SOW for that?
I'm sorry.
An SOW for the scope of work for?
Yes, we have a scope of work, and we have a budget, and we have a timeline, all part of their proposal.
Can you share that?
Sure.
It's very well got lost in my inbox if we've sent it already.
You may not, I don't think we shared that yet with you. We'll share the SOW, the budget, the, their proposal.
And then for the 12th Street Reimagined, is there additional kind of guidelines or framework for, for that that's available so far? What the objectives are, kind of, all those pieces, or is that just being held back until
No.
These sessions?
We had an internal kickoff meeting at City Hall, just to meet with, you know, Planning Department and, and the different players, because there are multiple consultants working on this. We, we kind of laid out a, got a path forward. So we do have like the initial scope, but we have everything kind of laid out in emails if you wanna see that.
Yeah, that'd be great, I'm just curious.
Sure.
And what happens in June to the 12th Street? If you're headed for this short deadline?
Well.
With the master plan that gets developed?
Sure. It's, it's both a transportation and a land use plan. Some of it may intersect with some of the stuff with Safe Streets and Roads for All. But the hope is that, you know, we would then be able to go and use some of, some of the other implementation money maybe to help guide us and also go out for additional funding. Sorry, you wanted the scope for the, also for the Safe Streets and Roads for All?
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Okay. Just lastly, the, the Parks and Comprehensive Parks and Rec Plan. We, for some reason, it's taking a lot longer on their end, not so much on our end. We've submitted the Steering Committee and resumes that they requested, and we're waiting to hear back what is going on and how we can hopefully submit the, have an RFP and hopefully get a contract under order here soon. So that's a little bit on hold on DCNR's side.
I believe Josh is.
Oh, that's great.
So just so that I'm clear, when we talk about the Safe Streets and then the reimagining West 12th, that is going to be done based upon the existing salvo and zoning, not any consideration for changes that we might have considered making before our working session got canceled?
Well, we discussed some of that in our initial meetings, and the Planning Department was very much in favor of having recommendations for zoning, for zoning changes.
Okay.
We know that the existing land use there is typically, right, manufacturing and light industry, but it doesn't necessarily, with the plan moving and a vision, that may change, right?
Okay. So recommendations, at least, what we can plan on?
Yes.
Okay.
Did he say that Josh is there? Anything else for planning and neighborhood resources?
Yes.
Public speaking?
Sure.
Ed Kissel, 2815 Sigsby, just a question on the, on the plan for the old buildings and all in town. I haven't had a chance to look at that either, but I have a question. Do federal buildings, state buildings, be included in that plan?
Yeah, we.
I'll give you an example. Soldiers and Sailors Home are looking to knock down the Commandant's House, that's probably been there for over 100 years, make a parking lot out of it, plus the Anthony Wayne Block House. There's no plans that I know of to knock that off, that historical site. But we're also planning to look at putting a walkway in from Parade Street up to the Soldiers and Sailors Home to complete along the shoreline a historical trail. So I just want to, excuse me, make sure if, if there's a plan to look at those buildings on state property, and does the city have authority to do anything in preventing and/or recommending?
So the plan that is, which will guide us in all of the next steps, that, the Historic Preservation Plan is a guide for us to use. The next step is that we're gonna be doing a historic inventory survey, historic inventory. So we're, it's a citywide survey that will look at all landmarks, buildings, even open spaces, cultural sites, that will determine whether or not, determine, will hopefully determine their, the historic value, and we'll have a current inventory of all sites citywide.
So what, excuse me.
So that will include what you're, that will include everything that you've just mentioned.
Will that allow you to have any input on them not either being destroyed or something? You're gonna have a separate plan, but then you're gonna look at the historical significance of what we have, but.
I would hope so.
Is this going to be, it gonna be put in an ordinance form, since it's going before City Council, I take it, after recommendations by the design? Do they go through a design review, or doesn't it need to?
Doesn't need to.
Okay.
We, we've already had, we've had two designations, historic designations, that have gone through the Historic Review Commission. We actually have a third application that's gonna be in front of the Historic Review Commission for next meeting, having to do with the federal building, the complex. So I would say that, I would say, yes, there is, there is input that the city has in designation of these landmarks and buildings.
But there would have to be an application for those buildings to be designated historical?
Correct. But the city is capable of being the one to prompt the application.
What kind of enforcement or recommendation do you do for a state building, as I mentioned, to, if they're looking to do this fairly soon, how, what kind of process, where is this going to be in another month or two after approval? City Council's not gonna hear it tomorrow because of the largeness of it, so there'll be another two weeks if they do.
I think, Ed, since it's a state property, that it has to go through the State Historic Preservation Office, which is the PHMC.
Yes.
And they will not, they have to weigh in and approve a demolition of a building that is on the register or historic, if you will, or subject to potential listing. Nothing the city can do. I mean, the city could set, could have designated a historic property, but, a local, local historic property, but they don't control, they can't encumber the state's ability.
That's what my question is, whether you have no authority over them other than saying, maybe reconsider it or so.
Yeah, I don't think that, that, you know, the Pennsylvania Department of Military Affairs, who I think controls that, is able to just go take it down without.
Yeah, they're already moving to, towards that, to knock it down and just put a little brick patio and expand their parking lot into that building which they remodeled.
It might be something to talk to a state rep about.
Pardon?
Might be something to talk with, state rep, was that Harkins?
Harkins.
Yeah, Harkins. I might be worth talking to him about getting that moving.
No, I mentioned it, they had their board, quarterly board meeting last Thursday with representatives from the state, elected officials who come to our area. In fact, we're fortunate, Barbara, who is the, she is the commander of the sixth state Soldiers and Sailors Home. She happens to have an office in Harrisburg, but lives in Erie, but she's been conducting the business from our Soldiers and Sailors Home on Third and Ash, so right here in our backyard. And like I said, I mentioned it to the board meeting about that, and then when I heard about the, this particular one, I figured, well, do we have anything in the ordinance, our recommendations to these agencies, if we get wind of them looking at it, any way to contact, which I know the procedures, but I just wondered if there was a paragraph or something in there that would.
It might be something.
Put an alert on doing something. So I thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
If you want a permanent copy of that, I could provide you with it if you'd like it. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, I think Josh is on.
So we're done with the planning and neighborhood resource update?
Yes.
Okay, good. And we're gonna watch the video?
Hi, Josh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I gave a little intro already, so whenever you're ready to get started, the Planning Commission is ready to hear your presentation.
Sure. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen in just one second then.
Can that be turned up?
Yeah, turn the volume up a little. And we will do. Let's go back to. All right, can you all see that?
No.
Not quite. It's a little small. We can see your screen, it's just small.
It's small. Is that because of something I'm doing?
Nope.
Nope.
No. You just have to drag down that bottom section, I think, Jackie.
Good?
Yep.
All right, we're good.
You're good, okay. It's good to be with you, even if virtually, and I know we had some technical delays, so I will, I will not belabor this. I'll just say that with Jackie's office and, and the Historic Preservation Commission, we have gone through an extensive effort in creating this Historic Preservation Plan, and in recent weeks, we've been putting on the very last finishing touches and a couple of revisions, and so now the plan is, the final version of the plan is available. I'm just gonna show you a couple of highlights from it, and so if you'll allow me. First, it lays out a vision where, for Historic Preservation in Erie, where preservation is really an integral part of the city and part of how, one of the tools for enhancing the quality of life in Erie and its environs and making it an attractive place for people to live and invest. The plan looks at the full kind of spectrum of buildings and structures, from archaeological resources to downtown, to neighborhoods, to religious buildings and schools and so on. And, and it really makes a commitment of the city to, as Jackie was saying earlier, to first inventory the important buildings and places in the city, we're continuing to inventory, to preserve the places that are representative of the whole spectrum of history and culture in the city, and to pay particular attention to commercial areas and neighborhoods, residential, historic residential neighborhoods. And just to touch on a couple of other things here, which is that preservation, as I said, should be part of a central strategy for revitalizing the city, and also thinking about how these historic, historic with a lowercase h, places are important, not just as, as historic resources, but as places that create attainable housing in the city and, and create a, a city where, that is, that kind of reflects its heritage as well as its future. In the, in the report, we cover really the whole range of Erie's history, from its very first settlement through the industrial period and up until the present day. And much of that will be familiar to you, but it's available in the report for you to look at. We also recap or highlight the six national, designated National Register districts in the city and the characters, the character of each of those districts, and all of the work that you guys have done to document the National Register listed buildings and structures throughout the city. There are 24 of them. And we particularly underscore Erie's intangible heritage. These are reflected in many ways through the city, including, including cultural events and, and things that reflect the history of the people of the city, whether, which may also be reflected in the buildings, but, but intangible heritage is something that is more and more important, or we have recognized the importance of in, in thinking about historic preservation. There are a number of trends that you are probably well aware of that affect preservation in the city. One of them, probably the most recognized or the most sort of, one that comes to mind is, is population, and the population of the city has been declining, and that is one of the challenges in terms of creating demand for historic neighborhoods and homes. We recognized that homeownership could be higher than what it is, and so some of the strategies in the plan particularly have to do with homeownership and kind of addressing that gap in value versus the cost of rehabilitation and repairs. There's, there's some information on demographics in the plan. An interesting just thing to note is that the racial and ethnic makeup of the designated National Register districts actually pretty closely aligns with the racial and ethnic makeup of the city, and I would consider that a good thing. We talk about the roles of, the roles of the Historic Review Commission in terms of issuing certificates of appropriateness and making accommodations for need-based applications and overseeing the diligent implementation of those certificates of appropriateness. And I'll just show you a couple of the highlights from the, the recommendations. First is identifying and documenting Erie's historic and cultural heritage, again, that was something Jackie talked about earlier in the meeting. Telling Erie's diverse stories, protecting and conserving places through effective policies and procedures. Investing in historic assets, and the plan includes a number of recommendations and resources for leveraging investment and historic resources. Engaging the community so it's really, so it understands the goals of preservation and how it is really kind of part of the living city, and, and, and creating a vibrant and livable city. And, and then managing the historic preservation, preservation program itself, so fostering effective programs, policies, and systems. And that is really where the plan starts in the first year, and I'm only gonna talk about the first year. The, the plan lays out five years of goals and strategies. I'm just gonna highlight these couple of things from the plan for the first year, which is to hire and retain a Historic Preservation Planner, which, congratulations, welcome Heather, and, and to provide training for that person. Survey and documentation is the, is the next first-year goal, and we have been talking recently about potential funding for that documentation. we have been talking recently about potential funding for that documentation. And, and then, of course, community engagement, and providing tools and communications and website platforms that allow residents and property owners and business owners in the city to understand the work of historic preservation in Erie. And I am happy to take your questions, or have a discussion as you, as you would like. Thank you for inviting us, and it's been a real pleasure to, to work on this with you all.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna unshare this at this point, I think.
Any questions? We're good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. Jackie, do you want, shall I sign off, or do you want me to stick around?
I think you can sign off. Thanks, Josh.
Okay, thank you all.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment on that? All right, well, unless we have something else. We're good. Do I need, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye.